...that we have, that you have blessed our city with, even the recent visitors and national attentions that we've had with our public safety, we are just so thankful for the peace that you bring to us. Help us now as a council to do the will of the people, to work diligently to keep our city safe and our families in a realm of fellowship. We thank you for all things and just be with us now in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
So, welcome everyone. We will note that the only council not available with us this morning is Bob Horkey, so we do have a quorum. There's real, really, I don't think, any other changes to the agenda. We only have a couple of items to consider. I'm going to leave the, we're going to change the order a bit from normal. We'll have some comments available at the end. I do want to get on to the approval of the minutes from the July 11th meeting of 2016. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 11th, please.
So moved.
It's been a motion to approve. Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay. Main item on our agenda today is the approval of the claims.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ake, Mr. Keane, Dr. Keane, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, same sign. Clerk, your claims have been approved. Dr. Keane? Moving on, we have no items under old business. We do have an item under new business for the purpose of introduction. We are dealing today with ordinance 16-26. Kevin?
Thank you. Good morning, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item before you for introduction this morning is a request for an amendment to the Trails Planning and Development, which is located at the southeast quadrant of State Road 32 and Oak Ridge Road. The proposal is to add approximately seven and a half acres to the Trails PUD district and to modify some of the development standards that are relevant to the proposal. This item is scheduled for a public hearing at the August 1st Advisory Plan Commission meeting and will return to you for adoption consideration at a future date. With me this morning is Birch Dalton, the petitioner, and he's here to make a brief presentation. We're waiting, we will be receiving a revised site layout, but we'll get that up on the screen here momentarily, but with that, I'll turn it over to Birch. Thank you.
Do we have one of those laser pointers today?
I don't know.
Is that only available on Monday night?
Here, hold on. Does this have one?
Oh.
It's not going to show up very well here. It's the top button.
First of all, my name is Birch Dalton with Ed Rock Development, and I want to thank you for allowing us on the agenda today. Before we go into the site plan that's being scanned in, I want to introduce a few people and kind of acquaint people with the site now and some of the major issues that we've been working with to date. But if you would look right here, Chip Slagle is here today. He, along with his partner, control these three parcels. Next to that is Derek Daly in Ed Rock. They control this parcel. This corner is controlled by Front 32, which are four local owners. Joe Sergi has these three parcels here, and he's in attendance today. At least, I saw him earlier. This is under contract with Front 32 with the Montgomery family. And then these three parcels are part of the proposed bridge project, which is going to come across here, and we just kind of have the final plans on that. This property is owned by Oak Ridge Investors, which I'm the managing director and controlling shareholder. It was purchased from the Hudson family back in March. That includes here, here, and up through Spruce, all the way out here on the Monon and the Midland Trace. Frank Hahn is a party to the prior PUD and to this one. His two acres is coming in. So, on a macro level, a couple of big issues have been this drain going through, which has caused a mount under the redraw of FEMA in November 14, flood fringe, kind of moving up that way and then taking a big piece down through here. So, on August 1st, I'm meeting with the county surveyor to go over drainage plan and something that will significantly help that project. So, that's one issue that we're working to overcome. The other macro big issue was the final location of the bridge and the fact it's going to be a solid retaining wall and how it would impact the value of these properties here because of visibility coming from the east to the west. We like the bridge design, we welcome the bridge, and I think what we're dialing in is how we build the road from this area, matching up with Rickers, to come through to match up with Oak Ridge. That's under design now, now that we know where the bridge is going to be located. And I think we're going to, working with staff, city engineering, and other landowners such as Holiday Corp. right here, who has this piece, I think we're going to come up with a very nice solution that makes sense for the long haul and have a very nice, well-connected road there. What the purpose of this PUD is threefold. One, we originally had apartments on this sector here, general business on this area here, with Justice Development and the CFO Brett Mashad's here today. I think we all know their quality work over 151st Street and Gray. Quality company, quality product. You know, we're asking the council to consider, we have 300 units approved on this area, which is approximately, I'll say about eight acres, and we'll extend apartments under their new design to take over this whole area here. We will not go up in unit count, actually, because of their concern of quality and the density, they'll probably be between 240, say no more than 280 units. It's dependent on how the flood fringe is handled and how we do the drainage. So, that final plan is yet to be completed. So, the Family Entertainment Center that was proposed here and the corresponding assessed value, general business, were proposing to move along the front. Here, we have a signed letter of intent with Starbucks, okay, and a retail center going down. This is Sharon Williams' home, which is not part of the plan. This quadrant here is still yet to be finalized, but knowing what's going to be left from the take, what Mr. Sergi would like to do, and then ultimately what we do with Baker. But the vision, do we have that site plan yet, Kevin?
We're still working on it.
Still working on it? Well, the vision is, is to pick Spruce up, move it over to this west edge of these two parcels, giving us a little better access out this way, getting away from the corner. And then as the road comes in, we'll have it here shortly, you'll see it nicely. That way, we can backload all these commercial applications. Here, we're looking at a Wings Restaurant. Staff has met with them. We met with them last week. This would be a full-service, very large sit-down restaurant with a real nice outdoor feature, because this retention pond here will move over to accommodate the new bridge and the connective road. So, this, while it does have a block with the new bridge, you know, they understand it and, you know, it's actually, in my opinion, a unique feature that can make it work. So, Wings, et cetera. And we're pretty far down the line on verbal discussions, but Bob Taylor, the guy who ran Charleston's for years, he'll be the franchisees holder of that Wings. And we're going to be a long-term supporter of him, because I believe he did quality work at Charleston's for years, and I think he's a great add here. Now, one thing I've learned in my short life of being a developer and a football coach is I can never make everybody happy, any of, all the time. I make some happy. You got it? Okay.
Excuse me.
Good. So, if you look at the ordinance, one of the uses we're proposing is a possible crew car wash. I know it doesn't fit everybody's needs up here or wants, but there's two reasons it's important to the project. One, it's a huge traffic driver that the corresponding users around it like. But secondly, they're probably the company that's more willing to pay the highest and most with their ground and impact fees, which we need economically to put in this large road here. So, in the future, what our vision is, is here, restaurant, and then in this area here, you got it? I apologize, I thought this went in with our application. Can you turn it a long ways? That'd be in the order. Yeah. Not that one. Okay, that'll work. So, this sector here is the Slagle Pack, Ed Rock, Daly Ground. You see, right now, we've got it programmed around the flood fringe. We're using this, what only uses available. This changes dramatically if we get what we need done with the county drainage on the first. Freestanding Starbucks, right now, has drawn. We have to expand the outdoor eating area to comply, but this is a 20-year, long-term lease, so they're making a large commitment to that corner. Retail center, we have a bank, a bank, out-of-market bank willing to come in here. And then we have another restaurant looking here with the infill, we believe, coming pretty easily with the location and traffic driver Starbucks. Over here, you'll see the, what we believe to be the remnant after the bridge is in, coming off the Monon. You'll see how we have the road and the radius, trying to meet the needs of having a full-service entry across from Rickers, coming through, coming down below this property. So, the final configuration is not done, because what we have with this road, why it's so expensive, is three things. One, it's 1,300 linear feet. We have to cross bridge, the drain, and then also, we may have to move part of the drain and reconfigure the drain to meet all the needs to fit up the flood plain. So, while we take this out of commercial GB, we would be asking to add all this and all Here, we still have the justice plan of using high-density, similar to the U-Shake building we had earlier, still staying here with high-density, and then spreading out more green space coming into the clubhouse, you know, the main entry and other apartments here. So, basically, we're spreading the 300 units on both sides now, taking into account of preservation of the Midland Trace beauty and of the Monon Trail and all the development we have on the east side of it and what we're doing on the west. We feel that this apartment complex offers a truly unique opportunity for a wide variety of tenants to enjoy restaurant, car wash, banking, hotel, gas lane, all the fast food, and so, plus a sit-down, full-service restaurant here. So, I think it gives this area a potential $30 to $35 million of project cost, and that translates into whatever the assessed value. So, I don't think we'd lose anything here by moving the FEC farther north. I'm looking at two sites going north, a little closer to Grand Park and also more walking distance from the schools. We're not abandoning the FEC. In fact, Pete Murphy and I have got it organized, and we've hired a new design architect, and I think we're going to come out with some truly unique attractions that no other FEC has in the state. So, before you today is this section, and I respectfully request that you take it under consideration. Allow me to go to APC, and then as you have comments, issues, and questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Birch. This is a council introduction today. That's the purpose of this. It will go to APC for a public hearing on August 1st. Are there any comments or questions from the council before we pass this on?
Just for the public, FEC stands for Family Entertainment Center.
That is correct, Family Entertainment.
And then the other thing, for clarification purposes, you're talking about a stand-alone, a sit-down restaurant. Is that one and the same?
Yeah, that's the Wings Restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
On the east end of, on the east side of Spruce.
I have a few questions. Have you talked to NDOT about the access under 32?
I have not. Right now, Spruce is, you know, it's kind of an odd situation. I own two-thirds of it, state owns a third of it. So, you know, in a perfect world, you know, if we can get the road in there, eventually, we'd like to get rid of the access to 32 to help that whole corridor. But right now, I need at least one cut to get people out, at least right turn, right in, right turn. I think as we work with staff and NDOT as we move on that, on the bridge and that road, we'll definitely have to deal with it. You know, at a minimum, I'd still need to cut one, right turn, right, right out, you know, maybe not, you know, the left turn is bad now, so, you know, I would look to try to get away from that.
In all actuality, Birch, there has been social media talk about needing another gas station, and I've told you, not gas station, I'm sorry, car wash. And I don't want to belate this and stuff, but I don't know that this is the appropriate location. You have a road right next to, and a car wash, and another retail center with a drive-thru abutting a residential property. And I realize that it's not the highest and best use probably for redevelopment, but there is a residence there. So, that does concern me.
I appreciate that, and Brett from Justice Development has been intimately involved with what we're doing out front, because it's a condition to close on the apartments in the back. They are not a landowner yet, they're a land pending buyer, developer, so they're aware of it, and I appreciate your comment. I look at the other crews, you know, one, their prototype's getting better, they work hard to be a good neighbor, and again, it's one of these things that, you know, they're willing to pay the highest amount of money to locate. They picked the site. Actually, Joe Sergi brought them to the table, and that's, you know, he's the one that, you know, was contacted by crew, and they originally wanted his three parcels, then they found out with the bridge and the fact they couldn't be horizontal, they had to be vertical. It didn't work yet for Joe Sergi's property, but it still can. But I appreciate your comment, and I'll work on the Spruce entrance.
I still think further west and on the north side would be a better option for that car wash.
I appreciate that, but I don't own anything west or north.
No, you don't.
Is the county going to allow you to build where those commercial properties are on the corner of Oak Ridge and 32? Are they going to allow you to build that up, to set them up a little higher?
Well, I'll know more when I meet with them on August 1st.
I've seen, back in the 50s, I'm that old, I've seen a flood through there that's pretty devastating, that ran through one of these houses that we're looking at. And if the drainage is not, you can have floods like that, and if the drainage is not properly designed, it can be a pretty bad thing, plus downstream too, in these apartments. And so, you know, once, once we approve that, then the fix is up to us, it's not up to you. So, I think we've got to be real careful about the drainage that comes through there. A lot of times, people don't follow through with elevations and stuff like that, and they need to.
Well, I appreciate your concern on that, and I've been on this project now, I'm in my second year, and I've had a lot of alternatives with civil engineering to fix the drainage problem on this site, both downstream and then there's other plans in the work that, you know, quite frankly, I mean, it'd be nice to have them done, but we can't wait on everybody to go at once. And so, I can assure you, the investment that, you know, I will be making staying in the Starbucks transaction, I'll make sure it won't be, you know, flooded, because I'm planning to be a long-term investor there, along with the Wings. And the Justice Development Company has developed many projects over, I can't even say 50 years. And so, their attention to the drainage is the same as yours and mine.
I just don't want a project that we're going to have to fix later.
I agree. And fortunately for us in this particular case, even though it didn't need to be that way, I happen to be highly interested in the ground downstream of this, so not only am I worried about solving it here, but also downstream, so. But I appreciate it, and we'll give you a detailed drainage plan.
Any other comments? This moves on to APC public hearing on August 1st as advertised. That concludes the new business under council comments. I do have a request from Melody that the council support a Christmas event and sponsorship. And I know it's Christmas and this is July, but she needs to know pretty soon. We've done this in the past, so give this some consideration and we'll, she'd like to have a decision within the next week or two, couple of weeks, okay? So, I'll give you some details on that, but I think she wants, I think it's $1,500 for sponsorship. So, that's up for our consideration that you need to be aware of. Any other comments from the council members? If not, we do have a couple of minutes here. If there are any public comments, we would entertain those at this time.
I have two cards, Mr. President. First one is Mr. Steve, forgive me, Goodear.
It's closed.
Yeah, good, and Centennial Issues.
Good morning, council, I appreciate.
Yes, just please note, you're on three minutes, okay.
My name is Steve Goodear. I live at 1393 Bridgeport Drive in Westfield, really at the corner of 151st and Ditch, right across from the Harmony Development. The reason I wanted to speak to you is I did not, at this point, I'm representing a lot of the neighbors in my area, as well as Brookstone Park, which is a Carmel development on just on the other side. They couldn't make it this morning because of work commitments, but I have a petition that they've already started going around out of their 108 homes. They have 52 signatures in 38 of the homes actually this far, almost 35% protesting this gas station going in at basically 146th Street and Ditch Road. The reason I wanted to talk to you today is I really didn't know what the rules were for the APC, whether there'll be another public hearing after the changes that the developer is making. And so, I thought this would be the best chance to really talk to someone else other than the APC. I'm really not against commercial development. I mean, it's already been approved, I'm not here to talk about that. I was in the fast food industry for over 40 years in the San Jose, California area. I understand what's needed in certain areas, it's more of how the development is put together and what it's, and what it does. I went by and I saw the Getco Station that they're talking about down at Market District, and as far as I'm concerned, it may be a fuel station, it may be a convenience store, but quote-unquote, it's a fast food restaurant. I mean, it serves everything 24 hours a day. In fact, the manager said you can get a breakfast sandwich here, maybe 24 hours a day, so. What I really, there's four areas that I want to really speak to. One is the standards. What kind of neighborhood standards does the city of Westfield really want to portray to people that live here and that are thinking about moving here? A Carmel resident last night at our meeting said, "We in Carmel know that Carmel will not allow gas stations in their neighborhood, and they've designed their neighborhood commercial to tie in with that neighborhood." That's, am I, a lot, a lot, a lot, a few more minutes, because I'm speaking for a group? I'm speaking for a Brookstone group. So, it's really about the standards of Westfield and what they want their neighborhoods to really be and what other people coming in see those items to be. I don't understand why we keep coming back to the gas station, because ordinance 1214 said no gas station, and yet you're back here going through this whole fight all over again. I've talked to all the neighborhoods in the area, and I would say 90%, maybe 95% of the people we talked to said they did not want a gas station. They don't want to change, they don't want the fast food moving across to the north side of 146, and they don't want to change in the menu, eliminating, they want the hamburgers and seafood to stay as it is, it's eliminated from the menu. I was all, I also overheard someone from the city making a comment about emails that they received against this, saying they didn't want a gas station, and they said they were just cut and paste. What is, they said that, how much does that really mean? Cut and paste, anybody can cut and paste. And I said, "My feeling is, if somebody makes the effort to send an email in and say, 'No, I don't want this,' it really doesn't matter." How many different ways can you say, "No, I don't want a gas station," so cut and paste seems like a good idea? It makes everything easier for everybody. Also, the notification process, I'm getting, there's a meeting up in this meeting room on Wednesday night at 6:30 by the developer. The only way I found out about it was through our president, Joe Plankis, through the HOA. Otherwise, I wouldn't even know about the meeting. I mean, I think it's getting to the point where, in this day and age, a 660-foot, even though that's the current law of mailing, the property owners in that distance makes no sense with the digital media. Why can't anybody within a mile be notified of where that was, either whether it's the homeowners associations, whether it's Nextdoor, whether it's Facebook, whatever? There's got to be a better way to notify people. So, you, really, who represent us, know the feelings of the neighborhoods in the area. Otherwise, how would you know? A perfect example, town in, the Town West Development. How many people were notified in the Town West Development? Because 660 feet, you're talking to fields, you're talking to corn. I know, I have friends that live right in the develop, right after it, and they said they were never notified, so how could they even speak to it? The last thing is that I was asked by several people is, "What good are these petitions doing? What good are the petitions in sending information to Westfield about, no, they don't want, they don't want the gas station? Is anybody really listening?" That's, and that's what I have to respond to, to these people that have signed these And I appreciate, again, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you having this time for all of us as citizens to speak to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else?
Yeah, there are two others. Mr. Mark Shoff. Oh, another handout here.
Sorry. Mr. President, I have a meeting downtown, so I'm going to have to leave.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Shoff, and I live at 14925 Pollard Drive here in Westfield. My wife and I own a terrific new home in Harmony. We love the house, and especially, we love all of our neighbors around us. I would like to address the design of the CVS plans for the northwest corner of 146th and Ditch Road, as submitted last week, most recently, by the developers of that area. When we were in the process of building our home in Harmony, we were told that the architecture of the retail portion of the development would be of a village look in keeping with the design of our homes. As an example of the design, I am submitting to you in that handout, I think it's the third sheet of paper, a document taken from ordinance 1214 and approved by the council in 2013. The document was just resubmitted in black and white, and that's the best copy I could make, on July 5 to support the design of the apartment complex. That was resubmitted by the developers. You will note that the sample pictures show awnings, tree-shaded areas, quaint outdoor dining, gathering places, and friendly outdoor areas. As the first retail building in the development, the CVS design will set the pattern for the rest of the buildings to the west of the apartment, so it is really critical. The first iteration of the pharmacy had the feel of a store as found in larger shopping centers on an outlot. We see an example of this in downtown. We see an example of this in downtown Carmel on Range Light Road where there are many commercial buildings. We told the APC on May 2 that this was not even close to a village look that we were expecting. We saw nothing even close to the original mixed-use district examples as supported by the city council. This past week, we got a look at the revised plans, and with the exception of a redesigned roof and maybe smaller signage, there is essentially no serious change. We feel that the most recent design is not in keeping with the Westfield Comprehensive Plan that requires that the size, materials, color, and design of buildings to be unique to Westfield. Franchise architecture that represents no effort to create a unique design that fits Westfield, Washington Township is not acceptable. Those are taken straight from the, uh, the Comprehensive Plan. On June 16, upon the advice of one of the APC members, we attempted to speak with Mr. John Dobswitz, who was working in concert with the developers. This was an attempt on our part to work out a more reasonable design. We were essentially rebuffed in our effort. We regret that this missed opportunity did not result in a mutually acceptable plan. Okay. I'm speaking on behalf of almost 80 people. Would you give me one more minute?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The last three pages that are sampled in your packet there, we have found, uh, have the approach of a village feel. The first picture is on the front page of the petition that Carla will reference in a few minutes. The vast majority of Harmony residents have seen this very picture. When we signed our new home contract in 2015, there was no hint of a gas station in the area. In fact, we read that the council deleted the fuel station from a proposal in 2012. We stand behind this decision and hope that you continue to see the wisdom in not planting a gas station in the middle of four completely residential neighborhoods. We are excited about the development of a friendly, welcoming retail area in our neighborhood. When we were in the design phase for our home, we were told that we had to meet certain design restrictions that, because we backed up to Ditch Road. And as a result, we added many thousands of dollars to, of changes to our home, a lanai and a brick fireplace on the back. We had to meet the feel of the neighborhood, and we're happy that we made these changes because they were a serious improvement. But if we had to comply with the design requirements, the retail area should also. We want to be good neighbors, and we expect the same of them. We do not want to see boxes. We want, we want everything to fit in with the original design. There's another paragraph there that you can read if you would like. Thank you very much for letting me speak to this issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one remaining card, Ms. Carla Schaff.
My name is Carla Schaff. I'm a retired elementary teacher. I live at 14925 Pollard Drive in Harmony. I live two houses north of the lakes that will separate the residential district from the commercial district. We have lived there for three months, and we will directly be affected by the decisions that you make. Our neighbor who lives on the lake is here today, and she also will be directly affected, as well as many of our neighbors. I came to talk to you about the wishes of the Westfield residents, my neighbors, and friends in Harmony because we have no voice as homeowners. We don't have a homeowners association. At this point, there are only 81, or there are only 93 homes. As Mark said, we tried to be a part of this by contacting John. Uh, we have heard that he has worked with some of the people in Centennial. But we asked him if we could come and meet with him, and he simply said he would pass on information that we had given him, and that was the end of it. The petition I brought to share with you is the only thing that we have as our voice, and I gave you the petition. There were five of us, Mark and I, and Becky and Mandy and Molly, who walked and talked to as many of the houses as possible in our neighborhood. We actually contacted 81 of 93 homes, which is 87% of the households that are, that exist and people are living in them today. Out of those 81 people that we talked to, 78 of them signed the petition that you have in front of you. That is 96% of the people who live there. There were three noes, which I will tell you about in a minute. The petition, which you can read for yourself, says, the first one, no gas station, the same things that other people have said. The third one, the building architecture fits in with the community and gives the village feel. And I wanted to address this one because that's what we were all told. That's what we all thought were going to happen when we moved in. The three noes that came, the first one was a man who said he would absolutely sign the petition. He didn't want the gas station, he didn't, he, he wanted the design to fit in with the village style, but he works for an oil company and felt that, okay, I'm fast, that felt that it would be, uh, a conflict of interest. Another was a Realtor who really didn't want her name on the petition. And the last one really did want the gas station. That was one person out of all that we talked to. They still wanted the village look, but they have three teenagers and thought it would be very convenient for them. So that was one person. The people who came, the people we talked to were all amazing. It's your community, we have met so many of them. We have also met a couple of you. Steve Hoover has been very helpful. In fact, when there were a lot of rumors going around last weekend that things were being done under the table, that this decision was already made, Mark and I picked up the telephone and called Steve because we had talked to him and we couldn't believe that would happen. And Steve told us that it hasn't happened, that there aren't any decisions made. And we passed that all back to our neighbors so that they would understand that. We've also talked with Jesse Pullman several times. All of these people have been gracious and kind, full of integrity and honesty. I refuse to believe that you as a council and that you as representatives of Westfield don't want the same quality, the same feel, the same pride that you put into Grand Park, which we saw the opening of this weekend. The same feeling that you would give to the commercial center that is going to end up in our neighborhood. I appreciate you listening to me today. There are no second chances for the people in Harmony. We bought our homes, we built our homes there, understanding that it was going to be a village feel. And I would appreciate if you would remember that when you have to vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? That does conclude our business for this morning. Uh, thank you all for coming. Mayor, do you have anything before?
Before we adjourn, uh, could I just give a very quick update on APC?
Sure, go for it.
Uh, it'll only take me about 30 seconds.
There you go.
We had, uh, APC, last meeting, approved a, uh, addition, the development plan for an addition to the Primrose School on Gray Road. We also approved a development plan for Freddie's Frozen Custard, uh, which is, um, on 146th Street. The, a development plan was approved for a crew car wash canopy, where they're simply adding a canopy over the check-in area. Uh, we additionally held a public hearing for Bridgewater PUD District Amendment for the Radrick, Radrick Professional Building. And that was it.
Thank you. Anything? Brief? That does conclude our business, and we will stand adjourned. Thank you.